I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Fields, myself, Council President Kritzer, and we also have Mayor Bernie in attendance along with our Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission. So excited for tonight's agenda. There are four items on the agenda tonight: a joint meeting with our Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission, the 2025 State Legislative Session debrief, Asset Management, Asset Performance Management 101 informational briefing, and council talk time. The first item on the agenda is the joint meeting with the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission. It's so wonderful to be here with you all, and let me just kick this off by saying thank you, thank you for your service to our community. Really excited for this conversation tonight. We're going to have Lorene Hamilton, Parks and Recreation Director, to introduce this item, and I'll turn over the gavel to Mayor Bernie to chair this portion of the meeting.
Well, thank you so much. We're actually going to have Lindsay Falkenberg, our Parks Planning Manager, introduce our Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council members, for having us tonight. My name is Lindsay Falkenberg. I'm the Parks Planning Manager, and I'm really excited to introduce the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission for tonight's joint meeting with council. This hardworking and passionate group of individuals volunteers their time to provide a voice for our community. Dream big, do community outreach, and advise park staff on parkers' projects. Tonight, they will be sharing their 2025-2026 work plan with you, as well as sharing accomplishments from the last year. At this time, I would like to invite Clint Smith, the Parks, Trails and Recreation Chair, to introduce himself, and the rest of the commission, and kick things off.
Thanks, Lindsay. I appreciate it. We appreciate the time with everybody today. Thank you very much. So, we have a slide deck that we were going to run through, so if we can pull that up and go through it. And I would just say, if you have any questions, comments along the way, please, we have it be interactive rather than just presenting something to you, so feel free to chime in. All right. So, yeah, we can go to the first slide. Yeah, there we go. All right. There's our wonderful opening slide for you. And next one is the agenda. So, we're going to talk about tonight, we'll do some introductions of the commission members. We're going to talk about a June 24 to 25 recap, what's happened over the last year. We'll talk about our priority projects for this year, for 2025, our youth advocate project update, and community gardens update, and then we'll just discuss the 2025 work plan for this commission in general at the end, and then open it up for discussion or comments, if we don't cover those along the way. All right, so I was going to do just a quick introduction of our commission here. My name's Clint Smith, I'm the chair. This is Garrett Michelle, he is the vice chair. One of our new members, Jody Peña, is here. Stuart Hargraves is also over here. Siri Blaisner is not with us tonight, she's also one of our new commissioners. Jim Kleppi at the end, as well. Christina Whalen is here. Praveen Rachakola cannot be here as well, he might be online tonight, though. We have one vacant spot in our commission right now that we are beginning to start the process of reviewing applications for. And our two youth advocates, Shalja Tayagi and Aria Navikar. So, we welcome them, and they have done great work this year. So, I'll move on, and Christine is going to talk about our recap for the last year.
Hello, council and mayor. It's amazing that it's been a whole year since we were last with you. I've been on the commission since October of 2020, so I've been quite a few of these, and it's my pleasure to tell you what we've been up to this last year. Right about the last time that we met with you, we were finishing up the Southeast Redmond Park Master Plan, and thank you to you all for adding funds for the Southeast Redmond Park into the budget, in the CIP portion of the budget, so we appreciate that. Then, we also had an East Redmond Corridor Subcommittee that had started and had done some of its work by the time we met with you. They had worked with a, excuse me, they'd worked with a consultant and come up with a final implementation plan, which I believe was presented to you last month. You'll be hearing more about that from Garrett this evening. We're going, we started some work with another Subcommittee for a wayfinding consultant to talk about wayfinding, and Stuart will be discussing more of that, so that's just in its infancy right now. You all know our history with dog parks and community gardens. They continue to be a success. We're still on the pop-up stage with the dog parks, and we've had quite a bit of additions to community gardens, and Jody will be speaking to that a little bit later. Our youth advocate project, this is really exciting to me. This has been a big change while I've been on the commission in terms of what our youth advocates do, and I don't want to tell you anymore about it. I'm going to let them speak to what they've been up to. It's really great. Someone turn over to Garrett to talk about the East Redmond Corridor.
All right. Thank you, Christina. Yeah, so, I'm glad you've all had a chance to be briefed a little bit on the implementation plan, so I'm going to try to summarize our activities and kind of provide some analysis moving forward. So, after decades of acquisitions, this corridor was envisioned in 2009, and it was a very ambitious master plan. You can see the scale just with the entire map there. But unfortunately, since that time, not a ton of progress has been made since its original planning. But, you know, fast forward to 2003, and it's listed as a top priority on the park plan. So, the commission takes a key from that, and we end up listing it as our top priority for our 2004 work plan, excuse me, 2024 work plan. So, in kind of unpacking that, the commission decided to form a Subcommittee in 2024, and we're just trying to study the challenges, you know, what's the cause for the delay, what opportunities are available? And we were basically, you know, told to seek out low-hanging fruit, you know, where can we make some progress on this, get some momentum, usually on the quick side and less expensive ideally. And in that process, Parks decided to hire consultants as well through HBB, and to update the master plan primarily for costs, since it had been some time, and then to phase out developments, so there's some sort of like logical sequence to this, because there are really so many steps even on each individual property. So, what we found in that time is volunteer work is mostly maxed out, definitely valued, but it's generally relevant for just like maintenance, you know, beating back brush, perhaps maybe something simple like a soft-surface trail, but it has a limit on what it can accomplish, given the scope of the project. And really, when those costs are updated, the scale and the costs are fairly enormous relatively to, you know, the city's budget on typical year, and that's not really even factoring in like other priorities that the city has just within Parks itself or citywide. So, we saw this more as a matter of money, essentially. This isn't a matter of political will. There's really widespread support for this particular project when we talk both internally with staff, stakeholders, and even park users. People really want this to happen, although understanding it would take some time. So, we can see there's a recognition that this corridor would provide a needed contrast and perhaps even complement to the rapid urbanization happening downtown. We've seen that in the feedback when we interact with people on that Subcommittee. So, moving forward, we're hoping with this corridor, we're kind of urging the city to look at this as more than just like a parks issue, say, and perhaps re-envision it as a vital link in a budding transportation network, hopefully, because it would open a lot more avenues for funding, if you consider that in this fashion. Because if you look at the park, you take a step back, most of the parks in the ERC are functionally developed, especially towards the northern end. It's not like this is some massive, you know, overhaul of what exists. The parks are functioning fine, but it's really kind of the connectors, if you're breaking this down. You know, this corridor's been described as a string of pearls, you know, a lot of the properties, you know, occupying that pearl, but we're sort of missing the string. There's not a way to pass through this part of the city using these properties yet. So, there's a potential here, you could create a really unique situation for most pedestrians and cyclists. If you create this corridor, you create a loop around Redmond that is fully connected through RCC, and you would unite with the power line trail, too. So, there's potential there as a transportation network or part of a loop, at least. So, that's got the ability to also move people from an underserved part of the city down to these stations that the city is developing downtown. If you're talking about getting people access to these light rail and transportation hubs, ideally, they can do so without using a car or have another option, at least. You can perhaps walk there, cycle there, what have you. It is part of the city that doesn't have a lot of, you know, cycling options, or at least there's gaps, say. It's not united. So, basically, you can kind of look at this as also a logistical issue. Last mile is kind of a term that's cited a lot in that industry, or even in, you know, a public setting like this. So, this helps address that as well directly, even if it hasn't been conceptualized that way originally. So, it helps to complement basically what's happening downtown with all the transportation improvements that have been made there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Stuart, we'll talk about wayfinding next.
Sure, okay. So, brief update about where the commission is with wayfinding and signage and digital navigation for Redmond's parks and trails. As we have discussed in past joint meetings, wayfinding and signage is a continuing priority for the commission. And so, just a recap of 2024, we are continuing this process of developing walking routes for our parks and trails. We developed two in 2024 that are published on our website, and there are two that are in the pipeline, so to speak, that are awaiting development and publication, and I look forward to seeing those happen later this year. For 2025, I think the big development is that funds have been allocated for a consultant to develop a vision and a plan for wayfinding in the city of Redmond, for Redmond's parks and trails. And the commission voted in April to create a Subcommittee, and that Subcommittee, the purpose of the Subcommittee is to gather ideas and feedback from the community and from the commission and work with our consultant that we hire to communicate, you know, the city's wants and needs, and work with them on developing a plan. So, an RFP actually went out in May, and I want to give a major thank you to Lindsay and Cameron for putting that together, just because it's just the tremendous amount of work that that takes with everything else on their plate. And so, that RFP went out, and the deadline for submissions was last Friday. We got 21 submissions, which was, I think, far more than we anticipated. And there's a panel that'll be reviewing those in the next two to three weeks. Our original hope was to have a consultant selected by the end of June, but just given the sheer number, volume of proposals to review, that's probably going to slip into July, and, you know, we had optimistically hoped to bring that candidate before City Council for approval in July, but I think realistically, it'll end up being more like the September timeframe, just to kind of set expectations. But, the commission and the Subcommittee is really looking forward to engaging with the consultant we hire, you know, starting in the September timeframe, to develop this vision and plan, and I really look forward to bringing that progress to our next joint meeting with City Council. So, with that, I will turn it over to Shalja and Aria, who they are our youth advocates, and they will talk about their project. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Okay, so, Aria and I, as youth advocates, felt that it's very important to kind of foster the awareness of environmental issues specifically in Redmond. So, this year specifically, we reached out to several different schools and administration, and we formed two specific connections with Ben Franklin and Ben Rush Elementary School. So, basically, what we plan to do is we plan to go to these schools and give educational sessions, coupled with an interactive workshop part at the end, since kids are very usually. To get them quite engaged in these sort of things, you want to have an interactive part, so we are working on that currently. And for instance, we have one session that we want to do for local invasive species in Redmond, and we have a presentation that we will start these next year in 2025 September, since we're going to spend a lot of the summer to create more of our material and instantiate connections further, but as of now, we do have several different connections. And then, we also partner with the Green Redmond Youth Volunteer Work Party. More specifically, in these sessions, we want to bring awareness to volunteerism events that can be implemented and that they can join, so we do always plan to bring forth that at the end of our sessions. And now, I'm going to hand it off to Aria to talk about volunteerism.
Yeah, so, in addition to building the foundation for these classroom presentations, we've also been trying to build a base for volunteerism, especially among other high school students. So, for example, this year, we helped organize a volunteer work party for Arbor Day, so we went to Perrigo Park and removed a lot of invasive blackberries, and we hope to make these kind of a regular thing. We just set up a tree watering event sometime in July, and we hope to set up another one in September.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Jody is going to talk about community gardens.
All right, so, community gardens. We were, in April, we were able to expand the community gardens with the addition of Anderson Park. We added 20, 26 more plots. Six of those plots were ADA accessible, which is amazing. In addition to the plots, we were also able to add 400 to 500 square feet of pollinator gardens that surround the area, obviously benefiting pollinators such as bees, hummingbirds, and butterflies, you know, which help with the ecosystem. So, with the 26 plots at Anderson Park, and then the current 50 plots we have at Jewel Park, that takes us to a total of 76 community gardens, and both of those gardens have waitlists because community gardens are extremely popular. Yeah, that's what I got.
Great. Thank you, Jody. All right, and then, really just kind of wrapping the presentation portion, a little bit about our work plan. So, we adopted the work plan, I think it was in March this year, very beginning of the year, and like every year, we try to really focus on the priority projects that we outlined today, focus on a lot of the, there's about 20-plus items on the work plan, so I would say I'm not going to go through all of them, but it does cover the priority projects, and then ongoing initiatives, tree canopy, website improvement, volunteerism, youth advocates mentioned, and then a lot of the, also a lot of the items are constant for the commission that we deal with every year, Derby Days and the updates on regional and city parks programs. So, those are all embedded into the work plan, and, you know, it's certainly a documented plan, but it's not hard and fast as far as if new issues come up or new opportunities come up for the commission to advise on and study. We are all about taking those on as well. It's really just a guideline for us to follow each year to making sure that we're hitting in our meetings that we have every month, the important work plan items that we've outlined that we say that we're going to work on for the year, so that we don't just drop the ball on certain important issues that are Parks, Trails and Recreation key factors. So, the work plan, I think, is a good one, but I think it can evolve as the year goes on, depending upon the priorities. So, yeah, and I think that was about it for our presentation. I want to thank everybody for their time and input, and yeah, open for discussion, questions, whatever you guys might have. Thank you.
Well, thank you all so very much. I always appreciate what you bring back. It is great to see so much progress on issues that I know many of you have been working on for years, and, you know, forever ago when I was on the Parks and Trails Commission, too, so, but it's great to see a lot of progress. Love to see the activation of the youth members as well. Those are fantastic. I love the idea of getting out in the community and also building a volunteer base, because we really need that. So, thank you. That's wonderful. Are there any questions, comments from the council to ask our wonderful Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission? Councilmember Stuart?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for your thoughtful comments. Really appreciate the updates on the wins, and also the suggestions on reframing for the East Redmond Corridor. Do really appreciate your comments on that. I have a couple of follow-up questions on the wayfinding project, and the reason is because this is a project, or I should say, a community priority that we do hear about quite a bit. It's also in alignment with the first-ever Redmond Tourism Strategic Plan and our Economic Development Strategic Plan. So, last week, in this very room, we had, the room was packed with local businesses preparing to welcome lots and lots of visitors during World Cup. So, that's maybe my first question, is really great to hear where you are today. I'd love to know a bit more about who's on the Subcommittee, so when I encounter interested community members, who I can send them to? And also, what do you expect to be able to realize before that big event?
Okay, so, the easy question, the easy answer first. On our Subcommittee is Jody Peña, and Clint, and Garrett. Yeah.
Can you hear your chair?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. And we, and just, we actually have not formed our first meeting yet as a Subcommittee, because we're waiting for the consultant to come online, and then we'll start. I'll be honest, I don't think we've been at a lot of thought as to, in terms of like what needs to be in place for, you know, I don't know, what sounds like an onslaught of people next summer. I think that, I mean, just personally, you know, as, I guess, as a commission member and also as a resident of Redmond, I think having wayfinding that connects to public transportation is important, and so like when, for instance, when you end up at downtown Redmond, you know, at the light rail station, like, you know where, you know, like what direction to go, you know where, you know, how to get to, I don't know, if you need to connect to a bus, like which way that is, if, you know, if your goal is to actually go to Marymore Park, like how do you, right? Things like that, and I think some of that signage has already been tackled by King County, but I really would like to grow engagement with the other parts of Redmond around, just to kind of showcase what we have here in the city around our parks and, you know, and the trails and how they interconnect, and really like pull people in to engage with those things. And so, you know, that's great for residents, right? I think it also, it's important when people from outside the city come here and they see that this is a healthy and a functional and vibrant city that, you know, that encourages recreation outside.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that, and very much understand that you're just getting started. Like I said, these other two plans are really in alignment with all of that, and I know that our staff are very eager to be supportive of all of this. Maybe one suggestion I have would be, it might be beneficial, as time goes on, for a member or two of the Subcommittee to attend those quarterly business meetings, meetings of the business community that the city of Redmond now puts on every quarter, so just to be, you know, in alignment and understanding what the other conversation is in that group. So, thank you so much.
Great, thank you. We're going to go to Council Vice President Forsyth next.
Thank you. Really excited about the new community garden, so thank you all for your hard work on that. I know it's been something that's been on the plan for a long time, but just really excited to see it come to fruition, especially those ADA spots. Curious how many people are on the waitlist, and if we're considering potential other locations.
I actually think Dave Tuchek is online and would probably be the best person to answer that question. Dave, are you available?
Yes, I am. Hello, council. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how many people are on the waiting list, but we have been talking about expanding community gardens in the future, so possibly budget proposal in the next budget process.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Tuchek.
You bet.
And then, to our youth advisors, love your ideas, love that you're going to the schools. Noxious weeds are a big problem, and if we can get kids understanding what those are early and helping pull those out of the ground, it's really great, and I love the work you're doing. And then, also very excited about the wayfinding project you all are working on. I spent 10 years doing wayfinding, so if any of the Subcommittee members have questions, I am happy to meet with you offline and talk about wayfinding.
Great. Thank you. And I did want to add, I got a message from Lorene Dr. Hamilton that said, "We're also collaborating with the transportation and economic development teams in the city to be comprehensive in our approach," which is wonderful. And when we brought this item before for the budget as well, we knew that it wasn't just, wasn't just the Parks, Trails and Rec Commission that was interested in it. It really is about showcasing everything that the city has and really be being thoughtful about that. So, thank you, Stuart, for being persistent and helping us get that into the point now where we can really develop it. So, thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Thank you. On the, two things, two questions, two separate questions. On the wayfinding, I can't remember the last time we got 21 responses to a city RFP. That's, I mean, I'm not sure I've ever seen it in my lifetime, actually. One of the things I've seen in other cities with respect to wayfinding is sort of that signage that separates or helps separate cars from bicycles from pedestrians. In other words, a bicycle will say, you know, on a bicycle trail, it'll say, "Cars ahead" or whatever it says. Is that part of the scope in the RFP? Did we think in terms of creating that safety or separation as part of the wayfinding? And let me ask it a little bit differently. Can we?
Well, with enough infinite time and resources, anything is possible. I don't know if we have infinite time and resources, but I, for myself, yes, that is a priority. Now, that said, I think our, like, if we focus very narrowly on the problem that the commission has been talking about over the course of years, you know, we focus first and foremost on parks and our trail system, but I think that's probably a slightly myopic vision for what we want to do, and I think it's really about parks and trails and the arterials that lead people to and from them. Now, if we're talking about infrastructure in the city itself, I'm probably not qualified to speak to, like, you know, how that gets implemented and whatnot, but I'll definitely take your feedback, and I think that it, I think, I mean, as a cyclist and a runner, I definitely appreciate having clean separation between those concerns.
Right, and specifically, and I appreciate that. In, at Westler, for example, there are trails, bike trails, pedestrian trails, and they warn you when you're coming up on an intersection that's going to include cars.
Got it.
So, it's actually in the Parks and Trails system, but it's, it just provides that extra caution.
Okay, I get it. Yeah, I love that.
Thank you.
If I, just, I'm going to, so, I keep on that same thread, the, what you're asking for is more in the TMP, the Transportation Master Plan, and so, it'll be part of the discussion, but it's not in the scope of this wayfinding, but it will be part of the Transportation Master Plan discussion.
Something else, I just want to make sure that this is known, is that the RFP is for, so the first part of it will be to do a study. So, we're really hoping the consultants can give us kind of a comprehensive understanding of our current wayfinding and signage situation in the city of Redmond as it pertains to parks and trails, and really identify where the gaps are. And so, I think that's a really great suggestion to be thinking about those kinds of safety concerns, and we're hoping that that kind of comprehensive study is, kind of points us towards the types of recommendations and guidelines we need.
Perfect. Thank you. And then, second question, on the string of pearls, I think the comment was that we've reached sort of a limit of what volunteers can do, and then it becomes a question of money. There is political will, there is will. In my mind, money is part of will, you know? Political will includes the willingness to spend money, but I got the sense that until we, that not much will happen on this until the City Council and the City Mayor's Office come to terms with the budget for the next BIM. Is that, I just want to be clear if that's what I heard.
Boy, at the risk of, is this on? Yeah, okay. At the risk of speaking without a great memory of the implementation plan, I would say, there's probably some things we can do with volunteers. We just have to work it out in the context of the implementation plan that we just finished. I do think funding in the next budget cycle is going to be very important for some of the high-priority projects. If you remember the slide that Garrett put up, we have high-priority CIP projects and high-priority planning projects, and those are the ones that are, I think, probably going to require funding to get going. Does that sound right?
Yeah, I would agree with that. We worked really hard throughout that implementation plan, and big, big appreciation to the commission and to staff who worked with the commission to be really realistic about what we were putting forward. There are definitely some low-hanging fruit, volunteerism things, or even things that we can do contractually, like in our operational budgets, and so those are conversations that are being had with our park operations team and our Green Redmond partnership to see what can we do. So, there are some things that can continue to be done, but Jim is correct in that there are going to be some planning elements in particular that we're going to need to probably get some funding around in the next budget cycle that will help prepare us for that next piece. I think that it's really realistic to look at the East Rail Corridor as a
So there are some things that can continue to be done. But Jim is correct in that there are going to be some planning elements in particular that we're going to need to probably get some funding around in the next budget cycle that will help prepare us for that next piece. I think that it's really realistic to look at the East Rail Corridor as a couple decades-long project, just due to the vastness of it and the acquisitions that need to happen, the easements that might need to happen. But we really did also try to phase it out in a way that we're realistic. The next capital priority for the city is the MOC. And so it does take priority over these next couple CIP cycles. But as we prepare the CIS, of which we're about to do an update to, and prepare the CIP into the outer years of this next budget cycle, we'll be able to start putting some of these things in the docket and lining them out next to the rest of the parks priorities and seeing what we can reasonably do. And additionally, staff is starting conversations with King County and other entities on some of these easements that we could get into place that would connect some of the trail gaps that we have. So there is a lot of work that can happen. There's going to be, there are going to be budget needs. But I do think that the way that we've been able to, with the partnership of the commission, set that plan out, there's stuff that we can do now too. And the commission has been great doing that.
Great. I look forward to hearing more about what we can do.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
And next is Council President Kretzer.
Thank you all so much for this amazing work. And congratulations on so many of the outcomes. It is so fun to have seen, you know, many of these initiatives go from an idea on the Parks, Trails and Recreation Commission to a reality, you know, standing in those community gardens with folks on Arbor Day was amazing. And seeing people enjoy that, it's really cool. Yeah, and one question that I had, just following up on the wayfinding consultant, just on timeline, you mentioned that you'll bring it back in the next time that we meet, but will we be seeing it sooner or getting transmitted some iterations? Maybe this is also better for our Parks Director. But definitely, I would say, we don't need to wait a year if there's things for us to look at sooner. But are you anticipating it's going to take you a year to kind of do that work?
The subcommittee is scoped to last six months. And so, yeah, so I would be delighted to give an update before a year from now. Yeah.
That's great. And one question on the, on this, just one other question on the scope that I did want to follow up on. Is the scope including reviewing our online resources, kind of like some of these maps that are being created and some of those pieces, or is it the physical wayfinding?
It's intended to be the physical wayfinding throughout the city. I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So, not the online digital wayfinding. Yeah.
Great.
We are working on that separately. We did just hear from TIS that they're ready to do a project with us around the website and some of our digital wayfinding. So that is something that we're kind of doing in-house, but it's not, we currently aren't planning to have it part of this RFP process.
Great. Thank you. And yeah, I'll note, you know, one of the things that I was excited about that we added funding for in this budget, which wasn't specifically to parks and recreation, but more broadly could benefit the city, was just increasing capacity on communications. I don't know where we're at with hiring the extra people and adding the extra resources. But I am hopeful that maybe that will help with some of the online complementary work for wayfinding that we could do. I think one of the things that I hear the most, maybe I said this when we met last year, one of the things I hear the most from people are, you know, how do I jump on the city website and be able to easily find out how to access all these, like, amazing gems that we have across Redmond and just get connected in? So, just appreciate the thought leadership you all are providing on that. And hopefully, with some of our additional comms resources that can complement that during this biennium. And then, one last thing that I will ask as a question is Southeast Redmond Park, I saw it on your list, your work items. So, and you mentioned being excited about it. Can you give us the updates on what's your planned process for the rest of the year for you as a commission to work on the design around Southeast Redmond Park?
So, currently, the timeline for Southeast Redmond Park is that we should, it'll start moving through Public Works and we'll actually get a designer onboard in January is what we're thinking. And that's mostly based on a Public Works, like, project manager availability schedule. And so that's kind of our next touch point. And then we'll be able to reengage with the commission and, yeah, move that project forward.
Wonderful. I think it had a different quarter on your timeline. So that's why I was like, oh, are you already talking about it? But I am excited later on the, later on this agenda, we will talk about how we not only have dedicated city funding to that, but got some state funding for it this session. So, yay, Team Redmond.
Are there any other questions from council members this evening? Well, I just want to say thank you all very much. It's always wonderful to have you here, joining us. It's so great to have so many committed community members willing to spend their, not just a Thursday a month, but, you know, as I could see, like volunteering out in the community as well and getting people out and about and enjoying all of our, all that we have to offer. So, thank you all very much. Really appreciate you joining all of us this evening. Thank you to council for the great questions as well. I will turn this back over to Council President.
Thank you. And let's take a five-minute recess and then we'll come back for the second item on our agenda. We'll come back at 7:41.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is the 2025 State Legislative Session Debrief. Amy Tsai, our chief policy advisor, will introduce this item. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, council members. We are here to present the 2025 State Legislative Session Debrief. And with me, I have Brianna Murray and Amina Abdullah from our Gordon Thomas Honeywell State Lobbying Firm. And really super excited and pleased that they're able to join us in person today. So, as we cover at the end of each session, we're going to go over some themes that we saw during the 2025 session. Then we will talk about the specific city priorities and outcomes that you were hoping for, and cover the issue area highlights of the bills that passed during session, and briefly recap for you the next steps that are coming.
Good evening, council. I'm Brianna, and I'm going to kick us off with just an overview of what occurred during the 2025 legislative session. I will say, it's a bit awkward to be giving this presentation to council when someone on council has lived and breathed it on a daily basis and is very much also an expert in how things occurred down in Olympia. So, I'm going to do my best to capture all the nitty-gritty details. The 2025 legislative session was the first year of the legislative biennium. It lasted 105 days and was a long legislative session. The Democrats continued to have strong majorities in both chambers in the Senate. There are 30 Democrats and 19 Republicans in the House, 59 Democrats, 39 Republicans. New this year, there was a new governor and three other new statewide elected officials. There are 24 new legislators and nine new state senators. So, a lot of new people to their roles, figuring out exactly how the process works and how the different agencies work with one another. We saw that really come to a head toward the end of the legislative session, where the legislature and the governor had some tension as they were resolving what budget proposal would be that they could both agree to. The primary responsibility of the legislature in a long legislative session is to develop biennial budgets. The state has three different budgets, an operating budget, capital budget, and transportation budget. Two of those three budgets were facing significant shortfalls this year, and we're going to go through them in detail. In addition to the budgets being developed, over 2,300 bills were considered this legislative session and 433 passed into law. I'm going to just dive right into the operating budget details. So, operating budget is the one that you hear about most in the media, newspapers. It funds all state agency operations, including the K through 12 and higher education system. The state does have a requirement that the budget, operating budget balance over four years. So, they're balancing not just for the current biennium, which is 2025-27, but also for 27-29. The revenue going into that budget, in previous years, is estimated to grow at 5.2%. In the fall of 2024, that percentage reduced down to 3.5%. So, revenues started to really slow in their collection, not really a recession, but a flattening of revenue collections. That, combined with several new statutory obligations coming online and a general increase in the cost of providing services, created a $12 to $16 billion shortfall over that four-year period, depending on what programs you were in, we're not counting. The legislature balanced the budget over the four years through a combination of new revenue and cuts. In the 25-27 biennium, so the two-year biennium that the budget is officially adopted for, was $77.8 billion budget with $2.3 billion in reserves. The budget included $4.3 billion in new revenue and approximately $6 billion in cuts. So, again, that combination of revenue and cuts. The $4.3 billion in new revenue was largely generated through changes in capital gains and estate taxes, BNO tax increase, combined with an advanced computing surcharge increase, expanding the sales tax on certain services, and imposing a tax on nicotine products. In addition to those large bucket tax increases, there were a variety of smaller tax increases that together made up that $4.3 billion. I will note that in the media and other publication, there's been a lot of comments about it being the largest tax increase in state history, reaching $9 billion. I just want to note the discrepancy between that number and the numbers before you is the difference between the two-year budget number and the four-year budget number. And again, going back to the state's obligation to develop that four-year budget outlook. The capital budget is the next budget I'll cover. It funds all bricks and mortar construction for K through 12 education system, higher education system, all state agencies. So, think about DSHS, ecology facilities, ecology grant programs, commerce grant programs, all funded through this budget. Capital budget is funded with bonds that a percentage of the operating budget are dedicated to paying off. Of the three budgets, this budget was the most stable and did not face shortfall. It was a smaller budget than previous years, but the size of the budget didn't create a deficit in large part because there's not the same ongoing funding obligations coming out of the capital budget as there are on operating and transportation. The budget that the legislature adopted was $7.5 billion. The budget that the legislature adopted was $7.5 billion and largely funded through those bonds. There are a couple cash accounts that are included within that budget, including the Public Works Assistance Account. We'll talk more about that account in a little bit later in the presentation. The third budget is the transportation budget, where you all combine your capital projects into your capital facilities plan or whatnot. The legislature very much delineates those out. So there's capital budget, and then transportation budget funds all things transportation-related, including your bike ped facilities. The transportation budget saw decline in gas tax revenues and a significant increase in the cost of constructing projects that had been planned, starting both in the 2015 Connecting Washington Package and the 2022 Move Ahead Washington Package. That created a multi-billion dollar shortfall over six years and an immediate $1 billion shortfall for the 25-27 biennium. I would say contributing to that shortfall was also the obligation of the state to replace all the state-owned culverts. The legislature balanced that shortfall, again, by a combination of project delays and tax increases. So projects that were scheduled to receive funding by a certain year in both the 2015 Connecting Washington Package and 2022 Move Ahead Washington Package didn't necessarily receive their funding on time. There was a lot of conversation in the various transportation proposals about which projects to delay or not to delay, or if to delay by how much. So we did see the final budget include several different project delays, as well as a six-cent gas tax increase that's indexed to inflation to generate $3.2 billion over the next six years for that budget. In addition to that six-cent gas tax increase, there is a couple pages of small fee increases that also contributed revenue to that package. So that's the high-level context of the legislative session and the budget environment to put your legislative priorities in some grounding. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Amy.
So here is just some snapshots from your trip down to Olympia earlier this session for AWC City Action Days, and just a really great opportunity for all of you to meet with our delegation and the other electeds down there to advance our causes. So I just thought these were some fun shots just showing how really engaged you were in meeting with other electeds and also pushing your priorities and really selling the story for us. So really, thank you so much for your part in bringing life to the stories that we were trying to tell. In terms of what those priorities were, there were four main ones that were on our ask for this session. And Brianna just talked about how challenging that session was. So again, just a big thank you to you for your advocacy, and a big thank you to our 45th and 48th delegations for their excellent work in pushing things forward in a really tough climate. So we had four asks that I will overview here and then cover in a little more detail. We had an asbestos cement water main replacement request, Intercultural City Services Center, a 148th Bike Ped Project that was re-scoped to be a multimodal Overlake Village Access Project, and then also request to support state grant applications. On the first, the asbestos cement water main replacement, introduced and sponsored by Rep. Springer, and just, again, just really strong support from our delegations. We received $1 million on that project. And the reason that's important is we have just so much asbestos cement aging pipes in our city, and those are reaching end of life and leading to increased risk of pipe failure, which affects water quality, our aquatic habitats, and many other associated, of course. Just when you are in a home, you want to be able to get your water. So I'm really pleased with that one. Intercultural City Services Center, this is a project where we had requested $618,000. And thank you so much to Rep. Salhoudin and Senator Slatter, who had brought this project forward, and we were able to successfully get that full $618,000 request. So thank you so much there.
If I might add, when I went over the capital budget, one thing to note at a high level is within that capital budget in the local and community project account, where both of these projects received funding, the average appropriation out of that account was $604,000. So not only did you receive two appropriations out of that account, but they were both above average in size. So uncommon, particularly in this environment, and I'd encourage you all to be very appreciative.
Yeah, so definitely a lot of great work all around. So again, kudos to our 45th, 48th delegations and those who supported it as well. So this project would be building some service space in the affordable housing development that is happening at the Overlake Light Rail Station vicinity. And these are going to be co-located in affordable housing development that has 333 low-to-moderate-income household units, and then additionally being situated in Overlake, just serving a broad range of people with limited English proficiency and intercultural. It's our intercultural district, and so really adding increased access to the city and the services that we provide. So the next project was a request to re-scope our 148th Bike Ped Overpass Project to a multimodal Overlake Village Access Project. So still on 148th, but adding a lot, completing a lot of that bike ped network for increased mobility and ability to use those transportation access points like the Overlake Bridge and the Redmond Technology Station Bridge. So again, thank you to Rep. Salhoudin and Senator Slatter for advancing this project forward. We were able to successfully get that re-scoped to the new vision. And what's really great about the re-scoping is, instead of being a more expensive project that was escalating in cost, we were able to take that money and more efficiently make more immediate use and benefit to the residents with the re-scoping and design of this project. So we will be looking at $4.75 million in the 25-27 biennium, followed by the remainder of that balance in the following biennium. And then finally, our fourth major ask was to just continue supporting state grant applications. That some of these funds were potentially on the chopping block. Everyone was lobbying hard for their various funds. We had grants in process for a Washdaw Regional Mobility Grant, and we had a grant in process for the Southeast Redmond Park. And I think you talked about the Southeast Redmond Park earlier this evening. And so with both grants, they were able to be fully funded thanks to preserving these pots of money for important city asks. And so this was one where it was important, not only for us to get the money for these important projects that benefit Redmond, but do so in a way that really recognized and appreciated there's a lot of city projects in other cities that are seeking these funds too. And so just really trying to elevate all of the importance of all of these together. And so that, in conclusion, is the specific asks. And I'm going to turn it over to Amina to talk about our regional priorities.
There we go. Thank you, Amy. In addition to your legislative priorities, you all also established regional priorities, issues you wanted to keep a close eye on if they came up during session. One of these issues is the Washington Recycling and Packaging. During the 2025 legislative session, this resulted in Senate Bill 5284, which was sponsored by Senator Liz Lovett, and this bill establishes an Extended Producer Responsibility Program for consumer packaging and paper products to enhance recycling and reduce waste. The bill requires curbside recycling in urban areas by 2030. And a few of you guys kind of came out and testified on this bill, and just want to appreciate and say thank you all for testifying in support of Senate Bill 5284. Under affordable housing and fostering housing stability, we saw the re-emergence and passage of House Bill 1217. This bill was sponsored by Representative Emily Alvarado, Senator Emily Alvarado. And it limits rent increases to 7% plus inflation, or 10%, whichever is lesser. But it caps rent increases for manufactured homes at 5%. Housing newly constructed in the last 12 years is exempt from the rent limitations. We also saw House Bill 1791, sponsored by Rep. Dave Paul, which expands allowable uses of local real estate excise tax revenues to include affordable housing and homelessness projects. The bill removes prior restrictions on using REIT funds for operations and maintenance of capital projects, and explicitly allows their use for planning, acquisition, construction, and improvements of facilities for affordable housing and homelessness. It also introduces a tax exemption for the sale of qualified space in affordable housing developments to nonprofit organizations, housing authorities, or public corporations for community purposes. Lastly, under the same section, the legislature made significant investments in the state's Housing Trust Fund, allocating substantial resources, including $600 million to subsidize the construction of affordable housing units across Washington State. For transportation funding, you all requested additional state resources to address pressing local transportation needs. As part of the final 2025-2027 transportation budget and accompanying revenue package, lawmakers approved a six-cent increase of the state's 49.4 cent gas tax with a new rate indexed to grow 2% annually. For the first time in recent years, the revenue package includes a local distribution, 2.5% of the revenue for both the six-cent increase and the inflationary adjustment will be allocated directly to cities and another 2.5% to counties. Under World Cup, the final budget includes $2.75 million for a contract with a public or private entity to support public safety and security activities related to the 2026 World Cup event. These funds may be used for law enforcement and fire department resources, emergency management, traffic control, and security at official venues, including playing fields and fan activation areas. And lastly, we have asylum seekers. The legislature allocated $25 million to the Office of Refugee and Immigrant Assistance for newly arrived asylum seekers, and about $18 million for indignant legal services related to status. And I'll pass it back to Amy to go over the next few slides.
Yeah, I will just briefly add that this is a slide where we really have to thank you, council members, for your involvement in being active and testifying and being available. And I know it's no fun thing to sit there teed up for hours and on standby and being back up to each other amongst your schedules. So really appreciate you being down there. And so these green things that are indicated passage, also want to give a shout out on Extended Producer Responsibility. Many years in the making and just such a momentous occasion. And so proud to have Redmond present. Councilmember Stewart has been there the last several years, working on this, and would have loved to have seen you at the bill signing. But anyway, so really great kudos for activities on this page as well.
Councilwoman Anderson?
Thank you. Just a quick question on the last slide. With the $600 million allocated to the Housing Trust Fund, was that more than what was asked? Or was that under what was requested?
It depends on who you consider as asking. So the Low Income Housing Alliance made a request to the governor's office that, I think, $800 million be allocated to the Housing Trust Fund. The governor's proposed budget included far less than that and less than the $600 million. I don't remember the specific amount. So the final budget is the high watermark on official proposals. Okay, I have the wonderful task of covering all of the other bills that impact the city. And you'll recall that there were 433 that passed into law. I would say about a third of those, our count is around 115, 120 bills, have some sort of nexus or impact on city government. Obviously, we're not able to go through all of those for you this evening, but we have provided written commentary and information for you all to review and for departments to review on implementation. To provide you with a snapshot of some of the items, I'm going to just try and go quickly. On housing, the legislature really focused on stability, subsidy, and supply. And the stability really was captured in the rent stabilization bill that Amina covered. Supply was covered through the $600 million in the Housing Trust Fund. Sorry, subsidy was covered in the $600 million for the Housing Trust Fund. Supply was covered through a lot of the legislation that was passed. We continue to see a slew of bills introduced and passed into law that preempt local control in an effort to try and create supply. Many of those are under your planning and infrastructure components of your slide. But in addition to that, we saw, finally, a bill pass on significant condo liability reform. This has been an item that's been on your all's legislative agenda for several years, to bring about meaningful condominium liability reform, and finally got across the finish line this session. And I want to thank the mayor, who sat for hours to wait to testify on the bill and then actually didn't get the opportunity to because they ran out of time. So this was another example of your all's engagement on our Olympia activities. The second bill that I want to highlight is an expansion of the Covenant Home Ownership Program, which was an item that was on your legislative agenda a couple years ago and then was expanded to include a lower AMI level this legislative session. In addition to passing the bill, $200 million was included in the operating budget to support that program. On environmental sustainability, there were two bills worth calling out in addition to the Recycling Reform Act. The first one is Clean Buildings Compliance, which created new or alternative pathways for entities to comply with the clean buildings requirements that have been put in place for some time. And the second is Making Climate Commitment Act adjustments. You'll remember last legislative session, there was a collection of sort of technical Climate Commitment Act amendments that stakeholders had wanted to see made. However, because there was an initiative on the ballot related to the Climate Commitment Act, it limited the legislature's ability to do any of that policymaking without creating an alternative to the initiative that would also appear on the ballot. So this year, they were able to finally make those adjustments to ensure that the program can operate as stakeholders have agreed. Under planning and infrastructure, as I mentioned, there's a variety of different bills that passed with the idea of housing supply in mind. The statewide parking requirements bill, Senate Bill 5184, is one that I really want to call out as City of Redmond provided really strong technical feedback to make sure that that bill can be implemented successfully. The bill, at a policy level, was very similar as introduced to a lot of the policies that you all had already adopted here locally. But there were some process adjustments that would be problematic and very staff-time-consuming to have implemented the bill as introduced. And we had a really great working relationship with the bill sponsor to be able to make modifications to that bill. Same thing on the Transit Oriented Development Bill, a bill that we have been providing technical feedback into for several years, and that feedback being very consistently integrated into by the bill sponsor. The Housing Accountability Bill is a newer concept that got across the finish line that allows the Department of Commerce to go in and do audits of housing elements for jurisdictions. They're allowed to do up to 10 audits per year, essentially looking at the housing element of a jurisdiction and seeing whether or not that jurisdiction is complying with all of the different regulations that have passed in the last few years. There is a path forward for a jurisdiction to voluntarily submit for that audit treatment. And if a jurisdiction chooses to do that voluntarily, it's some protection from appeals. And then the legislature passed two bills to make it easier to take one piece of land and divide it into two. One that was specific to lot splitting, allowing a lot to be split specifically into two, and another one making the subdivision process easier, meaning if you have a much larger piece of land that you want to turn into four or five parcels, it eased the ability to do that subdivision work. And just a huge shout out to Carol Holland, who spends a lot of time reviewing bills and providing that technical feedback to make sure that when these policies are implemented here in Redmond, that they're efficient and hopefully not too staff-intensive. On the general government side, the biggest success was that all of the state's shared revenue accounts that the city receives distributions from from the state were fully funded. Over the course of my 20 years in advocating for cities, anytime that there has been a budget challenge of even the slightest amount, these accounts have been cut. So the fact that the legislature was facing a multi-billion dollar shortfall and chose not to touch these accounts is a great success and something to be very appreciative of. The legislature also had a robust discussion on whether or not to lift the 1% property tax cap. At the end of the day, the proposal did not get... At the end of the day, the proposal did not get, did not get across the finish line in large part because Governor Ferguson indicated that he would likely veto the proposal if it made it to his desk. The Association of Washington Cities has been having some discussion about where to, where to go, whether to bring forward that proposal again in light of its failure. And you have a council member who sits on the Legislative Priorities Committee, who's well suited to participate in that debate if you have any thoughts. We saw a variety of different labor employment-related bills pass that are generous to employees, but also will come at a cost or an expense to city government. The most significant is House Bill 1213, which expands paid family medical leave coverage and will increase costs, but also has a labor or employee benefit. Our community vitality, I want to call out two different bills. The first one is House Bill 1094, which was sponsored by Representative Wallen and provides a nonprofit property tax exemption that was requested by the Together Center. I also want to give kudos to several councilmembers who were engaged in and supportive of this bill and highlighted this one for us. Really appreciate the teamwork on that one. Also want to highlight House Bill 1811, sponsored by Representative Salah Houdin. I should let him describe what the bill does. But it puts in statute the structure around co-response teams and creates a training platform and was well supported across the city family. The final area I want to provide an update on is on public safety. Going into the beginning of the legislative session, Governor Ferguson indicated that he very much wanted to see $100 million allocated to a grant program to hire new law enforcement officers. The legislature heard that and had a robust debate around what they felt like that $100 million grant program should look and feel like. At the end of the day, the legislature adopted both the $100 million grant program and House Bill 2015, which includes a variety of requirements that a jurisdiction has to meet in order to be eligible to receive a grant, and also provides both cities and counties with 1/10 councilmanic sales tax authority for law enforcement and criminal justice purposes. The grants are limited to law enforcement funding. However, the sales tax revenues have more broader uses. And I'll call out, given some news this week, that public defense is one of those uses. On firearm or gun safety, the legislature approved House Bill 1163, which includes new firearm training permit requirements. And I think that generally is everything.
All right, well, thank you so much, Brianna. So, and you know, just reiterating that the bill that she went over, a thank you goes out to our departments as well for the significant amount of staff time responding to bill analysis and providing that level of expertise that has really made Redmond a go-to place for a lot of questions coming through. So that really gives Redmond a really great voice in the room when they provide that bill analysis. In terms of next steps, we're, there are elections for the appointed legislators to make them permanent. And there's also, I don't know, Brianna, if you want to talk about the risk of a special session? I think we're all done with the session, right?
I hope so, I hope so. So there's two different things to pay attention to when looking at whether or not we're at risk of going into a special session. The first is looking at the actions of the federal government and in particular, the changes that they may make to the Medicaid eligibility program. If they make changes to Medicaid eligibility, the state will have essentially two different options. One, to either come up with the funding to continue to keep the state's Medicaid eligibility as it is, but close the delta on any reduced funding from the federal government that is created by making that decision. Or convening a special session to change Medicaid eligibility, which would, would require a policy change. So watching the federal discussion on Medicaid is one thing to pay attention to. And then the other is to pay attention to revenue collections and estimated forecasts coming in through the Economic Revenue Forecast Council. Those happen quarterly throughout the year, and the next economic revenue forecast happens at the end of this month. I believe we will see a final economic revenue forecast on June 24th. If there's a sharp decline in revenue collections, that could trigger a special session. I will note that there's $2.3 billion in reserves, and the governor does have the authority to make across-the-board expenditure reductions or across-the-board cuts. The governor just does not have the authority to go in and make isolated cuts. So even if we do see a slight revenue decline or even a somewhat significant revenue decline, it would have to be pretty, a start, a pretty strong decline in order to warrant a special session. Is that, did I cover it?
So in sum, it's not over till it's over. And coming up next, we'll begin work on our 2026 state legislative agenda. We are already looking to, every June and July, we meet with the directors to start getting their input on that. So that process is going to be getting underway shortly. We're going to be back to you on September 9th at Committee the Whole for the first hearing on the legislative agenda. I hope to meet with all of you, if you're available and interested before that, to get your input as well. And then we will be back for a second hearing on October 14th. And if all goes well, we'll be moving on to consent from there. So I don't know if you have any final questions, because I do have a thank you slide, but I want to pause in case there's questions.
I think there probably are questions, so I'll moderate the discussion. Thank you so much to you all, really appreciate it. And great to see all these amazing outcomes throughout this session. So I'll call on councilmembers. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Just a clarification question on going way back, Brianna. On the increased budget was the highest we're seeing in the media, that it's the highest that it's been. The numbers that we're seeing, I know that those only tell part of the story. Was that indexed? Because we could take numbers right now and say, well, this is the highest that it's been. And of course, because of inflation, of course, it's going to be the highest that it's ever been. But was that the highest percentage or was it the highest dollar amount that hadn't yet been indexed for inflation?
So the dollar amount that's been appearing in the media is the nine, around 9.5 billion dollar number. And the legislature actually broke down the estimated amount that would be generated in both the 2527 biennium and the 2729 biennium. The amount that's generated or estimated for each tax in the two biennium is slightly different because some of the taxes take a longer amount of time to implement and so won't become fully implemented. So for example, the capital gains and estate tax was estimated to generate 32.1, 321.6 million in 2527, but the four-year total is 635 million. So I, I don't know that it's an inflationary amount as much as they very much went through and did the full four-year estimate. And there's more factors than inflation building into that.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much. And I do want to actually do a quick call out of my privilege as chair to note that it's not often that we do have a councilmember representative. So I am going to call on Councilmember Salah Houdin to share any thoughts or insights with our council from having been also on the inside of the session and to highlight any of the bills as well that you were able to work on on behalf of our communities. And thank you so much for all the efforts that you did.
Thank you. I don't know if, what I'm able to talk about in my role as a councilmember, but I will say that the City of Redmond has some incredible, incredible staff and team working down in Olympia, making sure that information on all of the bills was relayed as carefully as possible. And you mentioned Director Helen, you know, on all of the planning bills, that coordination was pretty seamless. And then also to all of the councilmembers and the mayor for actually coming down to Olympia, testifying remotely, et cetera. It was a very tough session. And I mean, the numbers show it, the number of bills that were passed and even the level of depth of the bills, you know, there were some tough votes. But I believe that a lot of good, a lot of good issues that had been worked on, RAP Act, RERAP Act, whatever we call it now, you know, the city's had that focus for so long. And now to have it passed in a session where it was, you know, financially tough, but we're making decisions that move the future of not just City of Redmond, not just our region, but Washington State, I think, was really great to see, along with, you know, everything else that the team covered. So I'll share that for now, but it was an honor to serve in the legislature, honored to serve as a councilmember, and excited about more, more legislation to come.
Thank you so much. And, you know, I'll note on the record, it's been several decades since in the House of Representatives, we've had someone from Redmond representing. So even though we know the 48th is more than just Redmond, it's great to have that representation. So appreciate it.
Do just want to call out one thing. Brianna mentioned those capital budget wins where the average was 600 some thousand. I looked at the numbers, the 48th and 45th legislative districts received the least amount of funding in the capital budget a total out of all of the districts. So to have those projects specifically for the City of Redmond that are higher than the average, which were Redmond's only asks from the city, that was really great to see, especially in knowing how we're trying to move forward on these, not just, you know, future vision with the intercultural funding, but like the asbestos pipe replacement is making sure that we are renewing what we already have. So great wins there. I also serve on the capital budget committee, so it was good to see.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you so much, Brianna. I really appreciate your encouragement that we should all be appreciative. You and I were in a room recently where we were asked to share some wins for our city for the legislative session, and I dare say it was awkward how successful Redmond was compared to the rest of the room. So in celebrating tonight, all of the wins and everything that has been just discussed about how great the session was for our city, other than continuing to partner with you until the end of time, what should we be thinking about for our next year and next steps in terms of continuing to be successful in Olympia?
Yeah, great question. I'll reiterate some guidance that I've provided to you all in previous years. I think one of the reasons you all continue to have success year after year is you develop a legislative agenda that is attuned to the political environment and budget realities. So I think what that means is next session is a short legislative session. I don't think the state's budget environment is likely to improve dramatically. I think the capital budget will continue to be the most stable of the three budgets. And I think the average appropriations out of that budget in a short session are going to be like 200,000 and less, and they're going to be focused on urgent projects. The other thing that I think makes you all continually successful is all of yours engagement with your legislators. It is very helpful that you all have positive relationships with the 45th and 48th. It's helpful to get direction in September so that we can do project tours and things like that and help facilitate that, that relationship. So I don't think anything changes, other than just keep up the good work on that front. The other way of thinking about the 2026 session is, you know, if you're like, oh, not sure what project really fits that criteria, is to think a little bit longer term and think, what do we want to accomplish in 2027? After the 2026 legislative session, which is going to be short and it's going to be a sprint. We're going to have election season, and if we have a very large request in 2027, it is helpful, from an advocacy standpoint, to be able to highlight that project throughout a time of the year when a lot of elected officials or prospective elected officials are in community.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie?
Thank you. I just want to also heap on the praise for getting us through this session. So thank you, Amina, thank you, Brianna, very much for your team and all the work that you did. And thank you to our new representative as well. It was, you know, kind of great to have you, I'd say, on the inside, but, you know, to helping, helping us kind of maneuver through things. So thank you. And thank you all the councilmembers who spent time advocating for the city as well, testifying, sometimes trying to testify, not quite getting there, but, but your voices were heard. But, but also, I do want to thank Amy Tsai, who rarely, who does not like attention, so I'm going to embarrass her right now, but.
Yeah, you're embarrassing me because this slide is for Brianna.
Oh, okay, well. But I will just say that we have, you know, Amy Tsai and our team, who has wrangled a lot of information, worked with some amazing staff members on our side of things. So thank you to the staff as well. And made sure that things got done on time, people were notified, we all knew what we were supposed to be doing in order to get what we needed. And so I think the payoff is in the legislation that was passed and also the ask that we've got for a lot of our projects. So thank you, Amy.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, so, Mayor and Council President, if I may. So we've thanked our really strong showing with Representative Salah Houdin on our prayers and the rest of our delegation. We thank you for your engagement, the departments and the mayor for all of the bill tracking and weighing in and subject matter expertise. And of course, you all have acknowledged the brilliance in the room, Brianna Murray. And so what we have up here is a slide picture because this thing is sitting on my dining table. But it is a, she is on the TVW board because she supports good causes. And so this is a plaque that was given to the late Governor Evans from the TVW board. And so that is your prize, award recognition for this session. This is a description of that award and signed by Mayor Bernie as a thank you to you.
Wow. I just, thank you so much, Amy. You all are wonderful to work with, Amy's wonderful to work with. I really just try and do my best on your all's behalf. This is, thank you very much, but it's too much. And I just love it so much. My aunt even worked for Dan Evans for a short period, so this is incredibly meaningful on many levels. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for all your efforts and congratulations on the award. I actually did have a quick question before we wrap up on a couple, well, and a note on a couple of things, since I was digging through the capital budget, you know, looking through what happened. And I did want to note a couple of things that didn't show up in here, but I think impact our community that got allocated. One was 1.2 million dollars for the Marymore Cricket Facility, 2.5 million dollars towards MAPS's project that they're doing. And then one thing I saw, which I was curious if you could share more details on that I couldn't find, was there's $769,000 for Redmond Childcare Expansion. Could you share a little bit more about what that is? Or maybe our councilmember can share that.
Yeah, that's not from the City of Redmond. That is a, I believe, a Montessori that is doing a childcare project in downtown Redmond, and they receive funding, capital funding, private facility, private space, but open to, open and accessible to anyone.
Wonderful. Well, it would be great for us to be able to get some information on that, just so that way we know, because I saw multiple of our legislators from the 48th and 45th touting that they got that for Redmond. And I was like, I don't know what, I didn't know exactly the details of that. Great job. So I always love seeing childcare expansion and would love to hear more about that project. Maybe we can connect with those.
Yeah, I think the best way to learn about the project is to connect with the project proponents directly. Kind of an interesting black hole of Olympia is that it is really hard to find out project details from any sort of formal or official legislative process, if not through the legislative sponsor or the project proponents.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that and appreciate, yeah, all getting to celebrate so many good wins. And I will note that our Subcommittee on Tenant Protections convened after the session with Director Helen to be able to compare what happened in terms of state law, based on the bills that were passed, especially the rent stabilization bill, and to kind of look at the original pieces that we were going to be looking at for council in comparison. So we'll be coming back to council with some updated recommendations now that we've done those comparisons. We're going to look into a few more things around that. But wanted to just flag that for the council, since that had been a work item, was post-led session, seeing what happened. And it was really great to see our city get to step up in those conversations as well. And thanks for the support on, on that work as well, Brianna and team. So are there any other questions, comments? Councilmember Salah Houdin?
I do just want to, given what we're seeing at the federal level, really, really highlight the point that Amina made around the asylum seekers and the 25 million that our state put towards the Office of Refugee and Immigrant Assistance, and then the 18 million for indigent. million for indigent legal services. It shows that our state is making sure that we're prioritizing our immigrant, refugee, and asylee community members. And I know that we have our values, you know, held true to this in the City of Redmond, and that we can continue to move forward in partnership with the state to ensure that everyone feels comfortable, safe in our communities.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, we'll wrap this up. It's been a good night of celebration after a hard fought session. And I just want to say thanks again to our wonderful team and to the whole council for showing up to do our advocacy as well in Olympia. Wrap up this item. Thank you. And we'll look forward to you coming back soon for us to get ready for the next one. The next item on our agenda is the Asset Performance Management 101 informational briefing. And I will just note before we start this, that Councilmember Fields had a personal emergency and had to leave and maybe coming back online. If I see Councilmember Fields on here, I will make sure to recognize him back in the meeting. And as, now that we've got our staff all ready, I will introduce Vanji Garcia, our Public Works Deputy Director, to introduce this item. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. You know, as we have heard the good news of getting new projects at the city, the Public Works Department mission is to build, operate, protect, and maintain the city's essential infrastructure. So tonight, we have Brandon Buehler, who will provide an informational briefing on how our department is implementing a comprehensive asset performance management, APM, program, which supports the department's efforts toward APWA accreditation. Over the past year, Brandon has led the formation of the APM team with initiatives that maximize the value the community receives from its public assets. This program is supported and guided by ISO 55,000, the framework, which is an international standard for asset management systems.
Thank you for the introduction. Vanji, and good evening, council members. I kind of want to start with this. Public Works, our first responders, we require a high degree of operational readiness to maintain, to protect, to build our city's essential infrastructure. And I always think about this. The big one happens, the first question I'm going to get asked as the asset manager is, what's the status of the water system? How many streetlights are on? What's going on with our lift stations? What's going on with our wells? And it's in that context that we are approaching asset management. And you kind of already went through this. I think the high level is that when I talk about assets, I'm talking about infrastructure assets, although this can apply universally as ISO for anything that you manage. But we're really talking about infrastructure assets here. And the thing that I want to emphasize is that at a core level, asset management enables us to answer four primary questions. And they're transformative when we can answer them in depth, from our frontline technicians up to the council level. What do we own? That's an asset registry. What condition are those assets in? Those are condition assessments. What do we need those assets to do? Those are levels of service that are nested with community outcomes, with law, with priority. And how do we manage them responsibly over time within our budget? And part of that is forecasting out the need and understanding what the gap between existing level of service is, our ability to deliver it, and the funding available to maintain that level of service. I'm going to talk a little bit from the slides, because I designed them to answer many of the questions that I got when I was here last time. And then I'd love to have some time just for Q and A as we go through it. So if I'm reading too much, just let me know. I do want to read into the record, though, our vision, because we look at it every day on my team and within the department. And we're on a three-year journey of establishing a top-performing asset management program that supports our accreditation with the American Public Works Association, benchmarks industry standards in the form of ISO 55,000 and other thought leaders from the American Public Works Association and elsewhere. The Canadians do great work in asset management. But we have to adopt a long-term perspective and apply consistent stewardship, city value, aligned with Redmond 2050 to realize the maximum value over the total lifecycle of our long-lived infrastructure assets. And last time, and I know he's not here right now, but Councilmember Fields asked me specifically to speak to outcomes and to impacts. And one of the outcomes and the impacts that we are already seeing in the first year of implementing this program is the nesting of the so what from the frontline, from the asset of the pump in the lift station or in the well, to the community outcome that's identified in the comprehensive plan. And having that degree of alignment and focus operationally throughout the organization, and I'll get to the data part here in a second, is really transformative in making sure that we're making best use, not just of our financial resources, but our human resources, our human capital, knowledge programs, to ensure that every minute that we're spending on work in Public Works is mapping to an outcome, because those assets only exist to deliver service to the community. So we've got to take care of them. Something else, I like to, I talk a lot about this internally, asset management. We have a computerized maintenance management system, a CMMS. It's called Lucidity. We manage work tickets in it, right? Pipe breaks, we generate a work order. That's how we deploy a team to the field. But asset management is not just software. It is a process. It's a business process. And the more that we integrate it at a team level, at a functional area level, in the CIS, the CIP, across our total budget planning, the more benefit that we're going to realize. For every dollar of non-residential construction economists forecast, according to the APWA, that we spend on infrastructure, we can expect roughly a $2 to $4 economic return on that dollar spent on the taxpayers' money. And the better that we maintain the assets over their full lifecycle to make sure they're delivering, we go, we build a new, what we replaced well for. All right, let's say we go and do that. Well, it's going to be designed for 50- or 100-year life. The way that we get the most out of that investment is by having a good routinized maintenance program that is nested to a strategic outcome and to the asset level. So it is a business process, not just software. And it helps us resolve conflicts. When we get to the CIS and the CIP level, everybody's fighting for money, or not fighting, competing for money. And what we can do is we can use not just condition of assets, but also their relative performance. How are we measuring their actual performance, whether that's to capacity, or to a pressure, or to an outcome? The more that we focus in on that, we can resolve some of these conflicts of investing our limited budget into the things that matter most to the community. And I think the big takeaway for council is this requires top-down leadership. This requires executive sponsorship. This requires your support, because the infrastructure that we have in the city is going to outlive us. It's, these are generational investments and generational systems, as you know. And so it really is that long-term commitment to integrating this process as a core business process within the department, within the city, that's going to help us realize value over the long term. So I think that that's a consistent theme that I want to get across this evening, is just the long-term commitment to stewardship. And we have that as a city value. So we're well-aligned there. There we go. So why do it? I don't want to read all of this. These are the numerous benefits, enhanced service delivery, optimized use of financial resources, extended asset life, improved risk management, improved decision-making, really the outcome of knowing what you have, what its condition is, what it's supposed to do in terms of level of service, and the budget we have to operate at year over year, is that we can make better decisions. And so it is a key factor in implementing this. Yeah, policy compliance, on and on and on. Some of the jumping off points that I have here, well, let me get to the next slide. This one's a little boring. Okay, so how are we going to build it? Okay, here's how we do it. So I don't, I'm not in love with graphics, but this one's pretty useful and is consistent with ISO. At the top, we have the comp plan. We've got municipal code. We have the zoning code. We have then further down, all of our functional and our strategic plans, whether it's the capital facilities plan, transportation master plan, on and on and on, plans, plans, plans. As we get down into it, we rely on data. And someone made a comment earlier, we love a map in GIS. Well, all of the asset data in the city needs to live in GIS, and it needs to be accurate. And one of the goals that we have on the team is perfect inventory and zero defects. We're never going to get to that point, but it's the aspirational goal that we have in perfecting our data. And so you can see at every level, from the director down to my team, that we're investing resources in the enablement of asset management. One of the things that I asked when I came on board a year ago was, what's an asset management plan? Like for the water system, we have a water system plan that we just updated as part of the comp plan, but do we have an asset management plan that tells us what we're doing with the individual pipes and pumps? We don't have that. I was like, okay, I need to go write that. How do I write that? Well, according to ISO, that's the department's strategic asset management policy. So I went to go look at that. We don't have that either. I just looked up, well, how do we write a strategic asset management policy, or a strategic asset management plan, a municipal asset management policy? I was like, well, who's got that? We don't have that. There we go. There's the use case, right? And so I started digging into the comp plan. And there is terrific synergy right now. I think Vision Blueprint, Vision Blueprint 2050, however it's pitched, it's been discussed a lot lately. We had a kickoff meeting the other day internally, that Glenn Coyle led. And that's the perfect time, I think, for us to take a look at a municipal asset management policy, because it is the, it's the procedural framework that's going to help us to prioritize what we can do in terms of project investment and the available resources mapped to the strategic outcome. I mean, that's what the CIS is. And so asset management goes hand in hand. So we're finding synergy as we build the program across other planning mechanisms throughout the enterprise. This year, we're starting with four general asset management plans within Public Works for our water system, our wastewater system, our stormwater system, and our transportation system. We've gone through and we're identifying our most critical assets, pavement system, bridges, signals, pump stations, wells, high-level assets. We're really digging in to audit the accuracy of those data across the enterprise in GIS to make sure that we've got good numbers. I go back to the first four questions. What do we have? We need to have a complete understanding of that. So the team is investing a lot of energy in not just perfecting the data, but providing for the long-term update and perfection of those data sources. Again, we have to build everything to scale, not just for the water system or the Public Works Department, but this is knowledge work that can then be picked up and broadly scaled across the enterprise in due course. So we are keeping that view as we build the program here. And because some of my team are listening, I want to shout out to my great team, who is putting in tons of time and energy to help us build them. And you see them there. Okay, risks. This was another question I got last time that I was here. What risks will we mitigate by doing this? A big one, asset failure risk, or service disruption. The asset, the infrastructure is going to break, and we're going to pay to fix it, whether we plan on it or not, but it's a lot more cost-effective if we plan for it. And so a deep asset management or comprehensive asset management approach is going to help us really dig into our maintenance programs and ensure that our preventative maintenance programs and other intervention strategies for lifecycle management. Pavement's a good example. Of course, pavement gets more expensive to maintain as it degrades. And so there are points at the degradation curve that we know we can intervene with a project or a maintenance action or something like that, that can get us more value over time. So that's a big, big one. Reputational risk is another one. I come back to an emergency response situation. What's going on with our systems? Emergency, the incident commander's going to want to know. The public works and mayor is going to want to know what's going on with the status of our assets. By perfecting those data in GIS, by building from the ground up, not just hiring a consultant to write us a 200-page report that costs us 200 grand and goes on the shelf, but something that we're building internal and bespoke to Redmond, to the department, is going to help us mitigate those possible reputational risks or service disruptions that we might see in a time of crisis. Data and knowledge risk is another one. This is knowledge work. Staff change, things turn over. And part of American Public Works, American Public Works Association accreditation is building a robust program of documentation so that we can assure continuity of operations, regardless of staff coming in or out, budgets increasing or decreasing. We'll still have this intellectual property that we can operate the system from. So that's a big one. How am I doing on time? I think I'm okay. How does it scale to other departments? I got asked this before. Well, I think as part of Vision Blueprint and the CIS revamp, I think the time is right. We're a year into this journey within Public Works to dust off the draft municipal asset management policy that I wrote, I think in my third month here, just so I had it ready, and really pick that up with the planning teams that are assembled for Vision Blueprint. And I'd love to work with staff to bring those through in parallel, because that is how we apply this approach to other departments. What that would do is set the direction for other directorates besides Public Works. Parks is a great one, lots of facilities. Furniture, maybe wave finding signs, as we talked about earlier this evening. Soon as we deploy those assets, we need to start planning for how we're going to maintain or replace them over time. And a municipal policy will help us stay on that course, and is also something that helps us meet that APWA accreditation. And I believe Councilmember, I'm trying to remember who asked me the question of, what do we know that we have? What do we, I think it was Councilmember Nueva Camina last time I was here. What do we know that we have? What do we know that we don't have? And what's needed to do it? What would make a profound impact by implementing this? I want to accentuate that what we know we have, we have a good base of asset data in our GIS system. And that's kudos to our TIS team, Melissa's Brady team, who's leading the enterprise function there. And so that gives us a great starting point. It's not as nested from a planning perspective as we would like to see ultimately, but we've got a good base to work from. So we're in a pretty good spot there. We have an operable maintenance management system. That's a good indicator. We've got a dedicated asset management team within Public Works. That's another strength, according to best practices. And we've got the right culture, I think, from a strategic level to implement this. What we know we don't have is a perfect asset inventory with zero defects. When I go out to the intersection in front of City Hall, in GIS, that's represented as a signalized intersection, but there's eight signals there. That's the level of detail we want to get to, because the community, it matters if one of those things is out. And so we have to be able to continually, there's a whole streetlight thing in the Seattle Times over the weekend that I was pretty focused on. But, you know, the community doesn't care if 99% of our streetlights are up. They care about the 1% that aren't. And so we need to have perfect accountability of our assets from a service delivery perspective, not just from a financial management perspective.
If I could interrupt a little bit, just I think summarize what Brandon is saying. We've had a lot of conversations with how we have to maintain what we already have. And we have a lot to go of where we're going to build. We know that the city has grown, and it is going to continue to grow. So how do we have this framework to have a conversation on what's first, and how do we be proactive before that emergency of an AC water main breaking and having a whole community without water? So I just wanted to put a use case there.
Thank you. And what's needed to do it? Continued support. We need time. More sophisticated financial modeling, particularly as it relates to asset replacement values. Book value isn't very valuable to us when we are thinking about replacing the entire asset, when we have to look at how much AC water main pipe we need to replace over N number of years. The available funding, $1 million, how many feet does that get us? Maybe 1,000 feet out of 30 miles, right? What is that gap between the available funding and the service level delivery? And then where do we make that bets with that finite resource that we do have? So I think that financial modeling will be important as we scale. And then predictive maintenance tools enabled by artificial intelligence and other software models can help us scale, can help us do more with less. And we are making investments in our CCTV camera inspection of our stormwater and our sewer pipe. in our CCTV camera inspection of our stormwater and our sewer pipes. We're making investments there to get a higher degree of service where we can start to take advantage of some of the deep learning models that use image recognition to make work easier, safer, and our coding more complete across those systems. How do we know it's working? And I promise, I'm almost at the end. Two things, accountability, it's a city value and it's important for asset management. The next 18 months, what I envision that we do is every budget cycle, we bring a state of the asset report to council or an infrastructure scorecard, however we want to phrase that, so that even those first four questions that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, what do we have? What's its condition? What do we need it to do? How do we manage it? Right, at a high-level view that's appropriate for council and the community, that we have that report available as part of our budget cycles. So that's something that we can use to determine the effectiveness of how we're implementing this within the department. And the infrastructure scorecard in the longer-term future, I imagine, would be publicly available as part of our city website and, like other GIS tools, really help community members, businesses, council, whoever. So part of the way that we can look at it, here's the timeline for where we're at. We started last year, we're in 2025. We didn't have a team last year, we didn't have any of this, now we do. We didn't really know the degree to which our data were accurate, now I got a sense. And over the next year, we will work the municipal policy and we'll start really operationalizing the four functional plans or asset level plans that we'll have for water, stormwater, wastewater, and transportation. I'll pause there.
Thank you so much. What wonderful work and a great presentation. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. Thank you so much, Brandon, for being here and sharing about the process. I don't have a question, but really just appreciate the process that you're going through. And in that, as I was listening to you pursue excellence and a standard of excellence for our infrastructure, I was also reflecting that it was going to make it easier for you to communicate to us and the public. So where you kind of landed on this idea of an infrastructure report card that the public can see every budget cycle, I just want to like, absolutely, I totally support something like that, so that we can communicate better too about what the needs are in community and so that we can communicate back why we're making investments. So I think there's a lot of lessons learned from other things. Just one thing, you referenced it several times, you know, we've been building the comp plan, you all have kicked off this accreditation process and this asset management process. Something that struck me in your presentation was the later steps to deploy to other departments. I really believe that we are one Team Redmond. And we've had some examples recently where we've heard stories of, maybe it's a new traffic camera going in, or maybe it's the automatic license plate readers, and it takes multiple departments working together to achieve that. I would love to see the language and the culture of this work reflect integrating other departments in this pursuit of excellence rather than something that is happening to other departments. And so I'll just leave that at that. You all know your work far better than I and what's actually going on in the ground, but really appreciate having a chance to learn a little bit more about the process. Thanks.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Very well said, Councilmember Stewart, that was exactly what I wanted to point out was around the integration and the scalability as we continue to grow things that we already have in place, if it's siloed and happening to a department over here and then over here. As we grow, it's just going to be more and more difficult as we move forward. I also wanted to thank you for hearing us in the last time that we met and coming back with such thorough answers. That kind of then leaves us with no further questions to ask, so great job.
Thank you. I'm just going to piggyback on the comment around sharing with the public. And we'll note, I guess one thing that I have as a question is, for our KPIs, are we going to use any sorts of national statistics to compare how we're doing to our KPIs so we can kind of benchmark? You know, maybe it's like the percentage of our streetlights that are working on a regular basis or the like quality of condition compared to like an average city across the US?
The answer is yes, and we've already started that. We were kind of late to the American Water Works, another AWWA acronym, but the American Water Works Association for our water utility system. We actually participated in the 2024 benchmarking survey as a first time, and that does give us some heuristics about relative performance here in Redmond versus industry standard. So yes, and we will continue to do so.
That's great. I wish I could also add that I think the main, a really big positive of this effort is to create that conversation and the right wording and commonality of what we mean when we mean level of service and what the city is doing right now and where it compares to other cities. You know, we're doing a great job considering with how much staff we have and the amount of money we're able to commit to our infrastructure, and it's great and it's how to explain that to the greater community.
Wonderful. Yeah, and I guess I would just say, as you come back to share with council about some of the outcomes of that work, I think having those benchmarks and having that storytelling will be really important to be able to show how we're investing those public dollars outward. And I guess kind of in both ways of, I'm assuming we're going to have some great results since I do think we invest a lot into some great things, but also where we see that there's room for improvement and then it sounds like this is a great way for us to shore that up and say, where do we direct our dollars to where it's most needed? So being able to kind of be transparent about that, I think, is great and having that public-facing dashboard is wonderful. Any other comments or questions? All right. Mayor Bernie, anything? All right. Well, thank you so much for your work on this. Looking forward to seeing you come back and share the updates on this and striving for excellence here in our city. With that, we'll close out this item.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda is council talk time. So I have a few notes for council talk time and then we'll open it up and, as usual, we'll do our ombuds update and follow-up. So first thing that I wanted to note, which is actually the ombuds thing is noted in there, is that I did distribute out the full summary and follow-up action items that is long awaited from our council retreat to council this afternoon, not expecting you all to have read through it tonight, but in two weeks at our study session, it would be great for us to be able to do some additional conversation on that. I think, as you'll, I'll just note a couple of things worked on that with Council Vice President Forsyth to try to get some clarity between all the different notes that we had and what our facilitator had gotten. But one of the things that you'll note in there is we did try since it's been a little bit to note places where we have completed some of the actions that were put on our agenda. We have been kind of using this in the last couple of months to be able to drive forward what we do. You can also see from some of the proposed actions that we all brainstormed and that we've completed quite a few of those things. Our council leadership has followed up with the mayor. There's also quite a few that we haven't begun on. And so I think, and given that, you know, we're about halfway through the year, we have about six months left to prioritize some of these things, I think in two weeks it'd be great for us to come back, take a fresh look at that list and be able to talk about tackling some of those things. I think one of the things that we might want to think about, just in terms of one of the things that's noted in there that we had as a follow-up, council leadership did discuss with the mayor, some of the pieces that we might do to respond to the current national environment. But given kind of the various needs in the dynamic situation, it's possible that we might look, I think, at the retreat, one thing that was batted around was whether we do an additional kind of retreat-style study session at some point where we could talk about some of these ideas and topics with the mayor and some of the other staff as well. So that's something just I'll put as a note for everyone to think about. And then I'll just note as one thing to think about that I'll be planning to bring back as part of the discussion for follow-up. I think since we had this retreat, I was looking through, we had a bunch of proposals around kind of a youth council, our youth advocates, thinking through how we engage youth. And obviously, we've had now a lot of engagement with our youth over the last couple of months. And so that may be one that we'll want to consider, you know, how we prioritize kind of that piece, especially given the teen center discussion. So I'll just flag that. And we'll pause for a moment in case anyone has any questions or comments on that. But again, just want to note, we shared that out and we can follow up on that in two weeks once everyone's had the time to digest. And we'll also note, if there's anything when you read through that you think was kind of very much missed, I did try to document along with Council Vice President Forsyth, for example, the eight-step process that we came up with for subcommittees and, you know, some of the other types of agreements that we came up with. If anyone feels like there were any other agreements that we missed, there were, I think we tried to capture them mostly from our notes, it was a bit sparser notes from our facilitators. So we were trying to kind of remember some of those things as we put all those things together. So feel free to send those over to us and we can integrate those. We'll be updating this document on the shared drive so we all have a copy of this as well. And I'll pause there in case there are any questions on this. Otherwise, we can revisit in two weeks. Okay, great. Next item I was going to bring up is Derby Days. Just a reminder, if you haven't already done so, please send your preferences for signup for tabling to Deidre. We are hoping that by end of this week, we have everyone signed up so we can go out to our commissioners to fill any other empty slots. And we kind of, we had a couple of slots for councilmembers plus a dedicated slot for commissioners. There's also a couple of commissions that have requested to have their own tables and they're setting up for Derby Days for us to all have our tables next to each other up on the city porch. So even if we don't have, for those commissions that have their own table, they'll actually be right near us, so we'll be able to have mingling all day with our commissioners, which I know was a goal that came out of last year. Also, we'll note, we're going to do a really similar thing to what we did last year for the parade. So you're welcome to bring family and friends to join us in the parade as part of our council parade float, a.k.a. walking. We are going to have, I think, Otter Pops or popsicles to give out and we're arranging for a little wagon and cooler, so, and hopefully we'll freeze them well in advance as well this year. Mayor Bernie?
So long ago, prior to me being on council, they used to hand out Otter Pops. And I just thought I'd share that it became really challenging because when you hand out an Otter Pop, you actually have to snip them open as we do. So I'd just throwing that out there as an ease of use, maybe contemplate how to make it work better than it has in the past.
Did you have a comment, Council Vice President Forsyth, or no? Oh, yeah. And then last thing is, we did have a great, I thought we had a great council conversations at Grasslon Park, and we already need to start kind of thinking about our next one that will be in Astera Park. So I guess I would just say, after we had this one, I think our thought would, as council leadership, would be to have the Astera Park be a similar type of format where we could do rotations, but not necessarily have the topic-specific tables. But we've also done now the Downtown Park one with the topic-specific tables. So I did want to open up to council to see if there's any preference. Otherwise, we can leave it more open and do as we did at the Grasslon Park for the Astera Park. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the one at the Downtown Park. However, I would say whichever one provided or created the most engagement would probably be, that would be my vote for which direction we go.
Great. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I preferred the open conversation because I think there were community members that definitely knew things about us and what our interests were, and so they asked us questions related to things that they already knew. So I thought that was kind of nice. I know Grasslon was a lower attendance because it was a neighborhood park, so I just, I think it'll be interesting to see who comes to the next one.
Great. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. I also thought the Grasslon conversation, for those who came, it was awesome and there was tons of engagement following that. So I really appreciated that. In heading to Astera Park and overlay at Great Large, we're heading toward a neighborhood that has so many new neighbors, folks who have just moved to Redmond. So I do think it's worth pursuing a slightly different approach in order to get the turnout. I think that these neighbors deserve to be invited to come and meet their government. So these new neighbors are also, some of them least likely to be subscribed to city emails just because they are new. So a postcard effort, like we do with any notice, okay, our postcard could be more fun than a notice postcard, but a postcard could help turn people out. If it's the summer, a cooler full of Otter Pops, sure, that could help. But additionally, we have one more asset in the Coalition that is helping to bring online, the Small Business Incubator and Cultural Services at the Bellwether site. There's 11 cultural organizations who are involved there, and they're soon going to be the neighbors. So the council might consider also inviting the Coalition to come out with us and also meet the neighbors. The developer, Bellwether, did a neighborhood meet and greet that Councilmember Nueva Camina and I attended a while back, and there was like fewer than five people there. So it was not a chance for the Coalition to meet the neighbors, really. So still an opportunity there. So I think there's lots of opportunity with this one.
Those are all great ideas. Mayor Bernie, do you have any sense on whether we might be able to do some sort of postcard effort with our communications budget? I know some of that budget was supposed to be allocated to help support things like council outreach.
Yeah, I think it's worth checking. I, before you even said the postcard, I was thinking, we need to send postcards out for that. I do love the idea of inviting some of our partners as well. And then, you know, there was the ice cream truck we had at the Astera or at the Southeast Redmond Park, I don't know if that's possible. But I think that, I think it's kind of creatively how to invite the neighbors out would be great. You know, we'll put the general information out for the whole community, but I think, you know, kind of the density around the park would be probably great or maybe work with the, maybe work with those communities as well. So let's figure something out that we'll be like more directly inviting in particular to that and if we get moving on, and I think we can make it happen. That'd be great.
Yeah, I kind of like the idea, maybe the theme of this next one is ice cream social. You know, like come down to Astera Park for an ice cream social with the council or something. I will note, we have shared with Deidre, or maybe we're saying the same thing, we've shared with Deidre that we wanted to see if we could also talk to all the apartment building owners in the area surrounding Astera Park to see if we can put up a flyer inside of the lobbies of those buildings and as well as at the businesses, given that we have several Microsoft campus buildings and some other campus buildings. So it'd be great to not only get people who live there, but also folks that work there to come down and get to meet their city council. Did you have anything else, Council Vice President Forsyth, or was that the note? Great. Cool. Well, thank you all for those brainstorms. We'll follow up and we'll just come back to you again on how that's evolving, but we want to just stay proactive and build out a great event in Astera Park. With that, those are the only notes that I had to bring up during this council talk time. As usual, want to bring up and see, I think Councilmember Stewart's ombuds this month. Are there any ombuds items that folks wanted to discuss during council talk time? Okay, great. Any other items for council talk time? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Real quick, this Friday, I will be co-chairing the Future of East Rail Workshop, and it is going to be in Bellevue at the UW Global Innovation Exchange. So if anyone wants to get information about that, it's from 8:30 AM to 12 o'clock. It should be a pretty interesting time. You can take the light rail to get there, so that would be a great way to get there. And I look forward to sharing all the things we talk about in our workshops next week.
Wonderful. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. Earlier, Councilmember Salahuddin had made a point that the importance for us here in Redmond, that everyone feels welcome and safe in our city. And then my other colleague, Councilmember Stewart, said to increase communication with the community and to have that openness. And by no means. And by no means, for those that are listening, is this a statement on behalf of the city whatsoever. This is just my account, and using this platform as a community leader, to make sure that we're getting good information. I'm speaking directly to what we're seeing in LA. Over the weekend, I went down to LA, and I was there for personal reasons. I was not going for any other reason. I was actually celebrating, my bestie and I successfully launching two new adults into the world. And we got in at about 11 o'clock on Saturday morning, and we were shopping in the Fashion District. I bring up the Fashion District in the timeline, because about this point, it was about noon. And while there were some protests going on, it was nothing that raised either of our concern, and we went about our time shopping. We then went up through Little Tokyo and Japantown, and to another spot that was having a pop-up. And again, we saw protests, and it was nothing more than what we would have seen, what we have seen locally here in Redmond. As we were going through the city civic center, I was driving, and I had noticed several California Highway Patrol units. And it was so not a thing to me, that I said, "Do you remember chips back in the day with Eric Estrada? He kind of looks like Eric Estrada." And several officers were leaning up against their vehicles, smiling, interacting with protesters, clearly not on alert. We drove by, there were protesters on the bridge, waving flags, signs, everything that I saw was peaceful. Timeline on this is in between 3:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. Now, this is not to say that there was not unrest elsewhere, but again, because of my position as a community leader, because integrity is one of my highest values, I would be absolutely remiss if, had I had, be able to give account to what I personally saw with my eyes, and not reported out on that in a public forum. Yeah, I would just be absolutely remiss if I didn't do that. There's also, I know, a lot of growing concern about the military being called up. Being a veteran, on August 18th, in 1993, I had taken an oath, and I bring this up again, integrity is my highest value, and it said, "I then, Angela Bryant, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, both in domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and I will obey the orders of the President of the United States and the orders of the officers appointed over me, according to the regulations of the Uniform Code of Military Justice." So help me God. This oath does not have an expiration date, and this is one that anybody who has served in the military takes. With that, I will also mention that military members are only required to obey lawful orders. If it is illegal, as in violates the Constitution, U.S. law, or the Uniform Code of Military Justice, service members are duty-bound not to follow it. Blind obedience is not a defense under the United States or international law. And I bring this up, because as currently our sitting councilmember, who is a veteran, I've gotten several questions, phone calls, to both of my phones, about what, what are the Marines to do? And while I can't make that decision, this is the response I have given to several of our constituents about what is, at once you take that oath, number one, what is the oath that you took? And then, number two, if the "it" is found that the sitting president has ordered an unlawful order, does the military have to follow that through? So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I had a couple of, couple of additional items. I'll call them practicing democracy, maybe, as a transition from a heavy topic, which I appreciate. So, here we go. Yes, thank you. Okay, so great. We got the notes from the retreat today, that's awesome. One of the things I'll be looking for, when I open those up, is around the idea that council had at our retreat to proactively be out in community and meeting with our human services providers in particular. I just want to share back with the council, I'm two-for-two this week and last week, meeting with executive directors, or hearing from executive directors of our cultural organizations and community, who are kind of asking where we are, and if we'd be willing to meet with them. And one went so far as to say, "I have a meeting coming up with Brooke and Alaric from your human services team, and I was planning to ask them to host something, a listening session with community." So what I just shared back with this executive director was, actually, we're all on the same page, let me check in with the team. And so hopefully, when we do come back to review the council retreat notes in a couple of weeks, we can, I'm hoping there'll be some conversation on moving forward on that. I think there's a lot of angst, especially not knowing what is going to happen with the federal budget, and the other bills that could really impact our community.
Can I pop in?
Sure.
Before we move on to your next item? Yeah, I'll just note, since we have the mayor here, I know that we discussed that several months ago, about planning that. And I think we did get a little busy with community engagement around things like the teen center, but am happy to commit to working with Council Vice President Forsyth and the mayor to reach out within the immediate time to get those on the books. I do think especially, to some of the other discussions tonight, are, with everything going on, our community is feeling very vulnerable, and, both in terms of policy, as well as what's happening in other communities and what we might see. So it is important for us to be making sure we're getting that time for listening. Mayor Bernie?
Yeah, I absolutely appreciate that. I will just share kind of where things have been going. So we, fortunately in the budget, thank you, hired a federal lobbyist to help us kind of maneuver things. And last week, I spent a few days in Washington, D.C., to talk about housing, which is extremely important to all of us, and had the opportunity to talk with elected officials on both sides of the aisle about a few different programs that are extremely important to us, low-income housing tax credit, CDBG, community-based development grants, and housing vouchers of a variety of kinds. And shared with the, both sides of the aisle, the importance that all those pieces go together to ensure that people stay housed and the housing stays solvent. And I will share that it was all very good conversations, but also slightly frustrating, very frustrating, because I don't know how much the federal delegation, not our federal delegation, actually, they're extremely versed in all of this. But, you know, at large, with the budget that they are taking a look at, the impacts of some of those reductions of funds could be in making it so that people cannot stay in their housing, for one. Two, so that, those conversations are ongoing, that information is flowing. I am well aware of a lot of our nonprofits in the area, and the dependency on many of those programs that help all of our community members. So there's, it's definitely part of the awareness. The other thing I'll, they'll mention, because, you know, this is kind of a much broader conversation, but there's also reduction in funding for food for children, like summer meal programs and things like that, for SNAP, and other things that, although our community is quite wealthy, and, you know, many in our community don't need those resources, we do have a segment of our community who do need those resources. And those, cuts to those kinds of programs can be extremely devastating, because it's not just the impact currently on, you know, food insecurity and not having, you know, food in your home, it's also the long-term deficits that creates, in particular with children, to not have the proper nutrition. So, all that's to say, all of that is on our radar, we are watching all of that, we are doing everything we can to ensure that our voice is heard in all the places that we can. But I will share that, talking with our delegation, the staff of Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, and Congress, and talking with Congresswoman Del Benny, you know, a lot of these programs are at risk, and not even to get into Medicaid and Medicare and all those things, too. So I will just share, if community members are listening, I think it's extremely important to call, you know, call our delegation, let them know that you're concerned about this in particular, if it impacts you, and you have a story to share, please share that with them, or share that with me, share that with us, and I'm happy to share that along with others. But it is, we're in a challenging time right now, with a lot of different activities, not, some fine, some not, many not, coming at us. And so really, it's kind of up to us as a team, and with our resources that we have, to, one, pay attention, and to put our energy and our abilities behind us to make sure people are hearing us when we say that, who they will impact and how will they impact them. So that was really long-winded, but I just wanted to make sure our community knows that we are paying attention, we are doing what we can, and we'll continue to speak for those who don't have the opportunity to speak at some of those tables.
Thank you. And I will just note something that you'll see that was raised back in the retreat, and I think has been raised repeatedly, that I think has been coming up for community and council members, is ensuring that councilmembers know what the, kind of, what our authority within the city is, in terms of folks coming into our own jurisdiction. And I think that's something that we could follow up on, to just be able to make sure that councilmembers have the appropriate information, and that our community, I know we made a video early on regarding immigration, but it might be good to re, push some more of that information out, and make sure that we're all super clear on that as well.
And I will just share, those resources are still available on our website right at the top, so if the, if that, if community members are interested, none of that information has changed, all remains the same. So, and please reach out if you need more information or resources to connect to our Congresswoman.
Thank you. And last, I will just note, because you mentioned about food insecurity, and kind of thinking about that piece of it. If any councilmembers are available, I know the next Nourishing Network meeting, which brings together our different human service providers that really focus on food insecurity, that's going to be on June 22nd. And so I can pass along the info, if anyone wants to go represent, report back to council, but that's a great way to connect. I join those meetings as often as I can. And I'll pass it back now to Councilmember Stewart. Just wanted to make sure we took that up and have the opportunity to have that discussion.
Sure, there's a lot to cover. Yeah, there's a lot to cover, obviously. And I fear that when I, when I said, "Where are we?", is the question I got from community, I should be very, very clear. I know that we are doing a ton, and I know that Mayor Bernie was just meeting with the delegation, and I know that, I actually do know of ways that the city has helped in very personal stories for Redmond residents right now. So I know that we are doing a ton. The idea at the retreat was that a subset of councilmembers and the mayor would be able to go out and hear about the headwinds, you know, directly from the source, from these providers on the ground. And there are other cities around us. One actually was shared with me at our council conversations in the park, one of our neighboring jurisdictions, the mayor and two councilmembers have been on a listening tour, and they're meeting with, directly with the service providers, reporting back to their council, but also using that information very directly to report back to the delegation. And we are doing that in a more ad hoc way. I want to acknowledge that work is happening, but it's also, I think our service providers, in the angst and the worry, are seeing something a little bit more concrete in neighboring cities, and would like a little bit more from us. So, just in terms of organization of it all. So that's my feedback on that one. Two more in the way of just like, community listening. I shared with the council earlier today, you now know everything I know, but it was a community member who put on my radar that the school board actually scheduled two meetings with us next school year. So I shared that information, I looked it up in the packet, and called a school board member to confirm, but that is what sounds to be a direct output of our meeting with them earlier this year. So you now know everything I know, and I kind of leave it with council leadership, maybe, to work on next steps. And then lastly, I just wanted to call attention to our resolution that we adopted last week. I scanned it once more, just so many of the actions it calls on the city to do to support the LGBTQ community in Redmond is work that is already ongoing, and in a sense, kind of codifies that. But there is one section where it calls on the council to regularly host, actually, it says the city, so it doesn't have to be the council, but to regularly host town halls focused on two S, LGBTQIA+ issues, in order to, you know, adapt policies and hear what's on the community's mind. So when we come back in a couple of weeks, I will be curious to hear what folks' thoughts are on making good on this one. This is an action item that we don't have yet scheduled, and so much of the rest of it is. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Stewart. And thanks for passing on about the school board. It did seem to me after our meeting with them, that the school board president had said that she would follow up with us to be able to schedule that. So we didn't quite get that communication back, but now that we know, we can follow up with them and figure out who amongst us are the right representatives to go to that, to that meeting, and then report back to the group. I will note on the, on the two S LGBTQIA+ community listening session or engagement, that I did have a conversation with Axtin now about two months ago, when we were thinking about some of these listening sessions, to kind of see what, what might be the best way to do it. And one, and I will just say, you know, I think the feedback that I took was that we would want to think about how we also create a safe space for folks as we create, and that we don't put too much on our community-based organizations to have to do organizing. So I think those are just two things that I took away from that initial conversation. Because also, I think our community-based organizations, they're dealing with so much right now, that it's a lot to, for the organizing, but I think it'd be good for us to figure out what's the best avenue to be able to, or maybe as part of these listening sessions, create the right space for that initial listening, and then follow up on that with what seems like it's really letting that community lead in terms of what the needs are, so that we can respond to those. Any other comments, items for council talk time? All right, well, if there are no other items, that brings us to the end of the agenda, and if there's nothing for good of the order, this meeting is adjourned.